Okay.
And it's forty, Machu Picchu, forty-two miles each way. My man. Ninety-nine is made as usual.
Yeah, that's my thought, probably, that it's with the total, that's what I'm talking about. Thank you.
I don't think there's one, but it may be more.
You can play these all these.
What do we find?
I'm telling you, that's.
So, I just.
It's for.
Something. We should, well, we should do that. We should. First people created, we were inferior, they were. Under this, oh, did you have, we got, that was.
It's unbelievable. He's had that during a tournament. At least he's already resigned. At least he's already. You're not born.
This one.
Just say some words. So, do I need to sign off on this job, James?
Okay, just take them out. But take them out, it's nice to have them here.
Okay, I call this meeting of the Magnolia Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. So, if everybody would please stand, Dr. Moffett is going to lead us in our indication.
Please join me in prayer. Father, thank you so much that your mercies are new every day. Thank you for the love and the grace that you give us every day that we don't deserve. Thank you that we get the opportunity to serve this great community, and thanks for the leadership of all our superintendents, the entire administration team, and the tireless way they work to make our district what it is. Thank you for our incredible law enforcement officers and the way they protect each campus in our district. As school board members, we are definitely imperfect people, and we are asking for your discernment and wisdom to make decisions that are best for the children and teachers of MISD. And Lord, we ask for extra protection this time of year to all the seniors that are celebrating proms and graduations, and we pray for safety and smart decisions, and please keep them the safest possible. In your precious and holy name we pray, amen.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now we'll do our pledges, if we might remain standing, and Hannah and Tyler can come up and lead us off. Hannah will lead us in our U.S. pledge, and Tyler in our Texas pledge.
Y'all, join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your holy and precious hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Tyler, stay up here.
Good evening. One, thank you, Lord, for allowing us, allowing us to recognize one of our best and brightest. We are honored to present to you Tyler Stewart. He is a fifth grader at Smith Elementary School. He has attended Smith since he was in kindergarten. I first met Tyler when he used to come with his older brother to the science club meetings when he was in first grade, and I just remember he was just so composed and not intimidated at all that he was surrounded by these fourth and fifth graders, so I knew he was a special kid back then. Tyler is the youngest of four kids, and today he has a number of supporters in the audience, so if y'all would just stand and wave when I call your names. So, he has his dad here, Brian Stewart, and fiance Rebecca Scassini, his mom, Amy Quinlan, and his stepdad, Rob Burdick. Both of his grandmothers are here, Linda Quinlan and Betty Stewart. His aunt Katie Quinlan is here, and his brother Brayden, one of his brothers, Brayden Quinlan, is here. And then, he also has his two teachers here, Marcy Parata and Margie Eslick. So, I hope I'm not missing anyone else. He has lots of fans. He is very involved at school. His dad says he's just the greatest kid who ever lived. No offense, Brayden, you're awesome, too. He's involved in a number of activities at school, including science club, safety patrol, flag crew, chess club, makerspace club, choir, and he was also a UIL competitor and played sixth at the district tournament in math, which is a really, really big deal. Outside of school, his mom says he loves playing anything outdoors with a ball. He plays competitive baseball, which he has done since he was four years old. He currently plays first base and is also a pitcher. He also enjoys spending time with his family, playing games, fishing, cooking, which is awesome, swimming, and playing football and basketball. Just, he's a fun-loving kid. He, one thing that he's really proud of is he has been in the Scouts since he was in first grade. He started in the Cub Scouts. He has earned all of his rankings, and he recently crossed over to Boy Scouts with aspirations of becoming an Eagle Scout one day. And also, what has always been really impressive, as part of the Boy Scouts, he participates every year in our Veterans Day program, and this year and in recent years, he's the one who stands on stage and directs and does the calling of the flags as we present that. So, that's always very impressive. Again, that's where his composure comes in. Tyler, let you tell them where you want to go to college.
I want to go to Texas A&amp;M.
And he wants to study something with animals or agriculture. The reason, I had several nominations, but so many people nominated Tyler. He just represents everything that we value at Smith Elementary School. He works hard, he has a positive attitude, he is kind and respectful to everyone, and he is a very, very smart student. He has a great intellect and great talent. However, he remains compassionate and humble, very kind, and he is still, even though he's at the top of everything, he is still always motivated to try his best in everything that he does. And in addition to all that, he is really, really clever and very, very funny, as a sense of humor. Yawn is here. Do you want to tell them the joke, the question you asked when you went to the sixth grade campus?
Oh, no.
He asked, no, no. He's very, very funny. He's just very funny. Anyway, we are very proud of him. We are really going to miss him as he goes on to Bear Branch Community School. Tommy Burns is lucky to be getting him to grade student, so it's my honor to present to you Mr. Tyler Stewart.
All right, Hannah. Dr. Garza, meet you up here front.
All right, good evening. My name is Brandon Garza. I'm the principal of Magnolia West High School, and I have the pleasure of introducing Ms. Hannah Eggleston. Her parents are here tonight, Letitia Eggleston and Dusty Eggleston. Okay, so Hannah is the absolute epitome of a star student athlete. She is just, she's inspiration, she really is. Let me read some of her accolades here. So, she is currently ranked number ten in the class of 2019. She is an IB diploma student, so she is on track to get her diploma next year. For those of you that don't know, IB is probably the most rigorous coursework at high school taken takes, and she is excelling at that. She is involved in National Art Society, Mu Alpha Theta, Spanish Art Society, MISD Student Leadership, and of course, the Stang Gang. And her IB diploma coordinator had a comment for her. Since Hannah is just a natural leader, there is no other way to put it. I've seen it in a variety of settings. Hannah is always one that will step up when needed. She's really a leader among leaders. At school around her peers, I witnessed her helping other students with homework, life troubles, or the occasional boy issue. She's also a counselor, apparently. Others just naturally flock to her for guidance. She's a hard worker and not afraid to take a risk to get her hands dirty. She's quick wit, with a good attitude, and amazing sense of humor. On the court, she is a two-letman for varsity volleyball and a freshman in basketball. So, her basketball accolades includes, so, two years ago as freshman, newcomer of the year for the district, first-team all-district, academic all-district, Montgomery County newcomer of the year, sophomore year, first-team all-district, academic all-district, and this year, our girls' basketball team won district, first time in school history, went to the third round of playoffs, also first time in school history, it was awesome. District MVP, Montgomery County Player of the Year, and she was also, in her second sport, she was second-team all-district in volleyball. So, gets it done on the court and in the classroom. I got a late entry of a text from Coach Simmons here, or, well, I'm going to pull that off my phone here. Hannah accomplishes all that is needed in a teammate and student athlete. She has all the ingredients to make up a blue room recipe of a player. Leadership, intensity, empathy, resilience, preparedness are just a dash of what she's made up of. She is one of the main talent on the court, in the locker room, in the classroom. She's a trendsetter that blazes her own path. How honored I am to be her coach. So, I have two daughters in my cell. If they accomplish half this, I'll be going by them. Hannah Eggleston.
Come on, Tyler, we're not done yet. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to you. I, no, I'm not biased, but I like your brother's shirt. And Devam is here also for a little something extra for you guys.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jackie. I'm with Devam, urgent care, we're all fourteen eighty-eight, and we just want to present these guys with fifty-dollar gift cards just to say congratulations.
I told you, guys, this is quite an honor. I mean, we do this nine months out of the year and do two per month, so that's eighteen out of thirty, thirteen thousand in the district, so not many kids get up here like this, so this is cool. Congratulations. Thank you, guys. Awesome job. All right, Dr. Tyler, I think you're next.
I'm up. Well, this is certainly my distinct honor, on behalf of this board, to get the opportunity to make some awards. This is the third time this award has been presented. It's our visionary award. And we present this to people who have made significant contributions to this district in helping us achieve our vision. We want to be the best district in the state, Texas. This, tonight, is the third time this award's been given, and I hope to see it be a mainstay at this board, and we're gonna, we're working on getting a plaque with the names of those people that have helped us along where we're going along the path. So, and I hope y'all will help me get through this, because tonight, I'm giving this award to someone who, one of my heroes. One of the heroes of this school district, one of my heroes in part of, in this school business, a mentor to me. I want to start off with some scripture to start with. And James writes, asks this question, says, "Who is wise and understanding among you? Let them show it by their good life, by deeds done in the humility that comes from wisdom." And more than three decades ago, John Paul Watson came to this district and started work here. Worked in a lot of different capacities. Before that, he'd been an administrator, a teacher, he got a degree from University of Texas at some point, graduated from Rust High School about the time I was born. I didn't want to go into that, John Paul. But he worked in this district, again, as a math teacher, an elementary principal, a high school principal. At some point in that, he was director of transportation, and though he touched a lot of lives in that job. And then somewhere, he moved into the position of assistant superintendent in about nineteen ninety-nine, while he was in that role, two young administrators showed up here in this district. One of them had hair that was a lot darker, and the other one had hair at that time. Todd Stevens and Mike Holland came here, two young guys who thought they knew a lot more about the school business than they did, and they were so fortunate, they had an assistant superintendent here in John Paul Watson, who knew this community, and I think he really knew about what education is supposed to be about. And I want to tell you that through those years, John Paul was a mentor to me, and by the way, Mike gives his apologies for not being here, but he wants to tell you that we couldn't have got by without you during those early years in that time. And John Paul mainly worked in the operations side, and I was over on the curriculum side of the house, and John Paul worked mainly during that time, because it was a time of rapid, rapid growth in this district. But he was doing everything he could to keep us up to get schools on the ground and have a place for all these kiddos and families that were moving to this school district to have a place and build this. John Paul was responsible for building at least nine brand-new schools, a natatorium, and alternative schools a part of this district. And he and Tim Bruner and Phil Rutter worked tirelessly to make sure that our vision of having great buildings and facilities was a real reality. You know, and during all that time, John Paul raised a family. He and Judy were not only a mainstay, also Judy was our director of nursing and working here side by side with it, but not only were they a mainstay in this school district, they were a mainstay in our community, in our church, at First Baptist. They were a part of Magnolia, they still are a part of who we are as Magnolia. And for all the things, John Paul, that you did on the operations side of this district, this award could, this award could be about that, but there's more to it than just that. I have to tell you, it goes to the heart of the person, and it speaks, I say it has to do with wisdom, and that's why I chose some of those, because John Paul, I think, left another legacy here. He left a heart that cared for people, for teachers, for this community, and he spread that wisdom that was just a part of John Paul everywhere he went within this district. And I just need to tell you, John Paul, because of who you are, and who you were during that time, and obviously to Mike and I, but to countless other one of these, the bus drivers, the custodians, the construction crews that worked, the teachers, all those people who sought you out from time to time for your wisdom, for the relationship, the joy that you helped bring, I think that's the bigger part of the legacy of what this is about. Because of what you did, John Paul, we are close, that wisdom, that love and that caring is a part of the DNA of Magnolia ISD because of you. That's why we're here to thank you, John Paul, for that love. I want to read one more passage out of James before I let us go with this. James also says, "But the wisdom that comes from heaven is, first of all, pure, then peace-loving, considerate, submissive, full of mercy and good fruit, impartial and sincere." And for those of you who know the John Paul Watson that I know, that's John Paul. John Paul and Judy, we love you both from the bottom of our heart. This district thanks you for who we are and what we're going to be. John Paul and Judy, you come up here.
Thank you, sir. So proud of both of y'all. So proud. We're so proud of them.
This is the visionary war for John Paul Watson, in recognition of your vision, supported by, I don't know, a lot of good things for Magnolia ISD. I'm getting older than I was at that time here.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. I don't like it. Don't like it.
Couldn't let you get out here with that same stuff.
We have one more picture question.
One more. One more.
I've always felt that Magnolia ISD was a special place, not only because I came here, but it was special before I got here. Continues to be a consistent campus, our campuses now, that care about kids in the most basic kind of way. Their character, their vision for them being better than they think they are, the encouragement to go beyond what they think is possible, all of that is wrapped up in just, as the pot says, the DNA of this district. I was privileged to work here. I still think of those years as very pleasant. I can't think of a day that I've attended here that I didn't want to come to work, and I am honored for this award. Thank you, Tyler.
One on legacy, that's awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President Blizzard, esteemed board members, Dr. Stevens, fellow administrators, and our honored guests. My name is Floyd Campbell. I'm the director of fine arts for Magnolia, and I have the privilege of working with our teachers and students. This evening's celebrations would not be possible without our teachers, so if you're an art teacher, would you step forward just a little bit? I want to introduce them. On my far right, we have Ms. Shiana Snook from Magnolia West. We have Marta Huntsman from Magnolia West, Kent Byers from Bear Branch Junior High, Sherry McIntosh from Magnolia High School, Regina Michael from Magnolia West, and Will Clark from Magnolia High School. Let's thank them. We want to celebrate two things tonight. First is our district art show. On April twenty-first, Magnolia ISD celebrated its annual art show at Magnolia High School. Ms. McIntosh is the host of that particular event. She doesn't mind talking in front of kids, but the thought of speaking to you tonight terrified her, so she thought I should do that. Our best, if you'll take a look over there at the board, the far left, the best of show for Magnolia High School is a painting called "This Is the Jungle," and it's by Emma Carpenter, and she has an affinity with nature and also recycling, so that's made of recycled magazine. And I'd like to have Emma come up here right now. She's a senior at Magnolia High School, and she'll be receiving a best of show trophy and also a check for two hundred fifty dollars, so give her a big one. It's customary to give the fine arts administrator half of that, Emma. Did not know that before. Our best of show for junior highs, right below that, to the right, is a gentleman in a jacket. It's called "Winter Coat," and that particular painting was done by Ms. Emily Chartrand, and she's a seventh grader at Bear Branch Junior High. She'll be receiving a best of show trophy for the junior high category and also a hundred-dollar check, so Emily, if you'll come up here. And Dr. Stevens, I was both the elementary principal, I don't know what that has to do with it, but I like to celebrate them. At this time, we want to move on and say that on April twenty-seventh, we had the privilege of going with several students and teachers to the VACE tournament. I call it VAS, because it sounds fancier. It's the state tournament for artists, and I had the privilege of being the chauffeur of the group. We took the fourteen-passenger bus down there. So, tonight, rather than listening to me speak, I've asked Ms. Shiana Snook to come up here and tell you a little bit about the artists that we want to celebrate tonight and a little bit about our trip, so Ms. Shiana Snook.
Thank you so much, Dr. Campbell, for the privilege of getting to introduce our fine artists. We have some great students in our district, great artists, and you can see that on display here. I love the fact that Dr. Campbell invites us, that you, the board superintendent, invite us to, to present them, that you get to see their work and you get to meet them. It's our privilege every day, it's your privilege tonight, and so if we can have all of you guys who went to state VACE and have your work on display, if you will come, student artists, if you will come over here, we're going to go ahead and introduce you to these guys, and you'll have the privilege of getting to see the work that each artist did as we present them. A little bit about the VACE event. VACE stands for Visual Arts Scholastic Event. It is the big contest for art students, and our high school students participate in that. It starts at a regional contest back in February, and across the state of Texas, thirty-five thousand works of art are brought to regional events. From those regional events, they select students or invite students to bring their work to the, to the state event. And at the state event, which Dr. Campbell alluded to earlier, which happened on April twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, there were twenty-two hundred works of art on display. It is a fantastic display of talent, ability, creativity that just would blow you away if you had the privilege of going and attending. Magnolia ISD qualified eight students for the Visual Arts Scholastic Event, State Event. Eight students, but nine works of art, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. Out of those twenty-two hundred at the state event, the work is judged again, and we had, at that state event, there are one hundred and fifty works of art that are deemed what is called a gold sealed award winner. A hundred and fifty trimmed down from an initial thirty-five thousand pieces of work. And I'll just brag on Magnolia ISD a little bit, we had three of those gold seal works out of the entire state of Texas, the one hundred and fifty. And I'll just tell you, you need to applaud that right there. So, without further ado, I'd like to give credit where credit is deserved, and these students deserve that. So, let me introduce you from Magnolia High School, Alex Hunt, and Alex is here, and she'll , I do, did a piece of artwork titled "Mia on Point," all right? And it is right there with the female with the hat there, and if you were to see that up close and personal, you would recognize that it is made up tiny little dots, and I don't know how many hours, but I can just imagine that it was a lot, but she did actually medal at state, and so you can see that she's wearing that today, but congratulations. But congratulations to Alex. Also from Magnolia High School, we have a student who, his name is Jesus Urano. And Jesus actually qualified two pieces of artwork for the state event. The first one is called "In Loving Memory," and it is the one that is directly next to him. Yes? And then he also qualified a piece that is called "Shiro Skiro Meets Tenebrism," which is a portrait of himself. And this is the young man. I told you, he qualified two pieces, but he also qualified two pieces as gold seal award winners. So he is two. From Magnolia West High School, I'd like to introduce you to Madeline Navarro, all right? And Madeline is in the blue here in the middle, and her artwork is a painting, and it's titled "A Masterpiece Interrupted." And she actually medaled at the state event, so you can see that she is wearing that as well. Madeline is an art II student, so she's in her second year of art, and it is a big honor for her to have qualified for the state event. So congratulations to Madeline. Also from Magnolia West High School, I'd like to introduce you to Young Gu. And Young is the artist who has created this painting that is titled "Arise and Shine." And this piece, if you were to look at it, has lots of detail, super, super really cool piece. Young is a foreign exchange student here, and we have been really privileged to have her and to get to know her, and glad you've been a part of the art department at Magnolia West High School. So congratulations to Young. Also from Magnolia West High School is a young lady by the name of Kenzie McClendon. And Kenzie is an art II, three-dimensional student, and her artwork is actually pictured right above her. And it is a picture of it. In real life, it is a three-dimensional structure and form made out of wicker reed and paper, and it is titled "King of the Sea." So it's a kingfish. And Kenzie, we are proud to say, was also a gold seal award winner. And her work, along with Jesus's work and the other 147 works of art, will actually tour the state of Texas throughout the summer. So it will be on display and will move from place to place for people to be able to see that. But congratulations to Kenzie. Also from Magnolia West High School, I'd like to introduce Ryan Rummage. Ryan is an art III. She actually is in our IB Visual Arts I class at Magnolia West High School, and she has created a watercolor and pen mixed media piece called "Perfect Together." If you have ever seen Ryan with her sister, you would know that they are twins, all right? And a lot of her work is always related to that, and this piece is none the different. But this beautiful piece, Ryan has received a gold medal for her work at state, and we would just like to say congratulations to Ryan. Two last pieces, two last pieces that we would like to just mention. The students weren't able to be here tonight, but we had two seniors from Magnolia West High School, Alec Hench. The piece that is, it's called "Skeletons in the Closet," qualified for state, and Mariana Markham's piece, "You Tread on My Dreams," which is actually an embroidery piece. It's actually been stitched. It's kind of cool if you have a chance to get to see it. Qualified for state as well. Thank you, Madeline. But these guys, I'm just telling you, they are superb, and I am so honored that we've gotten to present them to you guys today. They are top-notch. They are the epitome of what we are about here. They are dedicated to be the best, and they're becoming the best. So congratulations to these all.
And I was their chauffeur last, two weeks ago, so if you want to know anything about them, I will let you know. Young is really cute, from Shanghai, but she's a mean one, so. Mr. Clark, will you come up here? I have one final thing that I wanted to do, is ask you to come up here. Mr. Clark has served our district for 16 years, and he and his wife will be moving to Cairo, Egypt this summer. Many students have learned art at his feet, and my own students have taken art, I don't know how much they completed, but they took art under him. And Ms. Belensky, her daughter Courtney reveres him so much that a lot of times it borders on idol worship, and we need to stop that. I wanted to try to form a nonprofit group to raise a little money to honor students, and I thought we could name it the Magnolia Administrators for Innovative Art, but I realized that spells mafia. And then I thought, maybe, maybe fine arts keeps expecting new education with students, and that spells fake news. So I thought, why don't you try to trade less on what it's called? So what I wanted to do is form a group that will, in your honor, have a Will Clark Scholarship at Magnolia High School beginning next year. It will be $500 annually that's raised from volunteers and will be issued to a Magnolia High School senior art class student. This is a small way to keep your spirit and enthusiasm alive, but you have honored so many kids throughout your years, I thought it would be worthy to continue honoring students in your name. So thank you so much for all you do, and congratulations. And Mr. Blizzard, I just wanted to say thank you one more time for allowing us to celebrate these talented students and their teachers, and I want to ask you all to keep supporting the arts.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Appreciate that. A lot of good talent up here. All I could do is be the chauffeur that you were, and I'm not sure I could do that good a job at it, so pretty impressive talent. All right, Coach. I think you're next.
Mr. Blizzard and Dr. Stevens, the school board, appreciate the opportunity again to get up in front of you and have an opportunity to celebrate some of the things that are going on in our athletic department. I know I kind of repeat myself sometimes, but we talk a lot about culture and we talk a lot about things that are going on, and I found myself thinking, as I was standing back here with these three coaches, these three coaches and their staffs, how fortunate I feel like we are to have a group of coaches and players that not only do we want them to win because they represent us, but we want them to win because we like them. And I think that's a big deal. And I feel that way about our staff. I know because I feel that way about them, and I know that's how they feel about their players, and that's what we want. Family, we don't throw the word "love" around loosely. We think that's the most key ingredient to winning, and if you can create a team that will love each other and care about each other, then you've got an opportunity to win. And these coaches have done that. I'm gonna start, and then I'll come back. By the way, we're having a heck of a year. It's unbelievable. Right now, today, our girls, I mean, our boys, Magnolia High Golf Team is playing in the state championship. The team is, not just as individuals, but also as a team, and that requires hard work. You gotta be one of the top two teams in district, one of the top two teams at the regional tournament, and then you have to be able to do that to advance to state tournament. And then next week, the girls are doing the very same thing at Magnolia High Girls are. They were also district champs, finished second in the region, and now are competing for state championship next week. We've got a boys' baseball team at Magnolia High competing in the third round of the playoffs this coming weekend. If they can win that, they'll be in the regional tournament. Been quite a year, to be honest with you, and I'm excited about that. Last June or last May, I guess it was, Terry Jones, all of you know Terry, our athletics director, and I'm really glad he is, by the way. And we had an opportunity to fill our head swim coach position at Magnolia High. By the way, a program that had quite a bit of success a year ago. And we went on our search, and Terry basically went on his search and included me in it, is the best way I could put it. And we had an opportunity to, Dr. Metz, myself, had an opportunity to interview Jared Kaminsky. And Jared grew up in this area, was a product of Woodlands, I believe it was, high school. And so it's kind of been coming back home for him. Now, he's been a long ways away. He's been in McAllen, seven years? Is that correct? Am I right? Yeah, seven years. And wow, did we find a good one. I mean, this guy has come in and brought some things together for us and created that same culture we're talking about. So Coach Kaminsky, I'm gonna let you come up and introduce the swimmers. Another great, successful year, I might add.
All seven of you.
As they make their way up here, as Coach Bradley said, this is my first year here. Couldn't be happier. And we had a very successful year. And so just as they make their way up here, some of the team awards that they were able to accomplish this year, the boys were second in districts, fourth in regionals, and 34th in state. The girls were first in districts, they're the district champions, second in regionals and 11th at state. And also, we really focus on being student athletes. The boys are a national scholar team with a cumulative GPA of 3.66, and they received a silver award for that. And the girls are also a national scholar team with a cumulative GPA of 3.74, and they received a gold award for that as well. Standing before you are seven of the 10 state qualifiers that we had this year. Every single state qualifier that we had this year is also part of one of the all-state teams, which means they swam a time this year in the state of Texas that ranked them in the top 24. The three individuals who are not able to be here is Senior William Johnson, he's first-team diver, all-state; Senior Jaclyn Robles, who is second-team all-state for the 200 free relay; and then Junior Kylie Moriarty, who was third-team all-state, 100 free; second-team all-state in the 200 free, 200 free relay; and first-team all-state in the 200 medley relay. Those who are standing before you is William Honderick. He was a state qualifier and third-team all-state in the 100 breaststroke. Helps if you wave so they know who you are. Torsten Heinz, state qualifier in the 100 fly and third-team all-state. Anna Wentzleff, state qualifier and second-team all-state in the 200 freestyle relay. Presley Heitzman, qualifier in the 200 medley relay and first-team all-state in the 200 medley relay. Savannah Schwintek, qualifier in the 200 medley relay and first-team all-state in the 200 medley relay. Jada Shorter, who is a second-team all-state diver. And Olivia Gonder, who is second-team all-state in the 50 free, 200 free relay, and then first-team all-state with a top-five time in the 200 medley relay, 200 IM, and 100 Again, these are the state qualifiers. We had a great year. I thank Dr. Metz and Coach Jones and Coach Bradley for giving me the opportunity to come here and coach these wonderful individuals. It makes my job really easy. They're fantastic. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to recognize all of them to you tonight.
And Coach, I think I speak for all of us. You've made our job a little easier too, I promise you that, so. Great job, Coach. I'm gonna take a little bit of an opportunity. I hope I don't step on any toes here. I know, I don't think I will. There's a phenomenon going on in athletics right now. It's not really new, but there's some newness to it, and there's some things that are going on. I'm gonna lead to my point, which is to really brag on this next group. As school sports, if you will, high school UIL sports, we battle sometimes for our kids when it comes to outside interest, things like that, many times in the form of club sports, select sports, things like that. We try to work really, really hard with those clubs and those select teams. It doesn't always reciprocate for us, to be honest. And so I've just always been a believer, as a multi-sport athlete myself, growing up and watching kids. You know, our job at Magnolia ISD is to create a great high school experience, and that's what we want to do. We want our high school athletes to leave here believing that this was the best thing they ever had an opportunity to be a part of. So it has its place, certainly in developmental and those things. And the reason I say that is, probably nowhere is that more evident right now than in soccer. There's a lot of pressure put on our kids, and these girls in particular, to honestly not play high school soccer. It's going on throughout the state of Texas. We're not unique in it, are we, Coach? Any stretch of imagination. And why am I telling you that? Because these girls chose to represent us. I mean, I almost get emotional thinking about that, but they made that decision. They decided that we want to play, not only for good old Magnolia High, but for Coach Cleveland. We want to be a part of that. We want to be a part of our, of this team in what we do here. And we think, we think we offer something. We offer that uniqueness that comes from being one and enjoying each other, being around each other, and all those things. No one's done that better than Coach Cleveland has. She's highly successful since she's been here. This year, quite frankly, in my opinion, may be the most successful. I mean, we, I mean, these girls, I want to tell you something. Watching you play this year was a lot of fun, and it was a lot of fun because, I'm gonna say it again, we wanted to see you win so that you could be recognized, but not because we wanted you to be winner. You're winners before you ever stepped out there because of the nature of the fact that you chose to represent us. And for that, we really appreciate you. Coach Cleveland's had a tremendous career since she's been here. Coach, I'm proud of you for what you guys did this year. And April Cleveland, I'm gonna let her come up and introduce our soccer team.
Just to add a little bit to what Coach Bradley had to say, so we had our club four or five D1 college athletes that couldn't play, but we, this year, also for some reason, we had to overcome adversity with season-ending injuries. And this year, it seemed like every week, another starter had a concussion or tore ACL, and it didn't matter what was going on. We stayed together as a family, and we worked for each other, and the next person in line just stepped up and found a way to get the job done and win. And I'm proud of these girls this year, so I'll introduce them. Katie Clark. Sydney Renfro. Erin Mooneyham. Izzy Aragiano. Abby Larson. Grayson Neely. Teya Geidey. Courtney Sims. Maddie Alexander. Siria Nero. Tatum Davis. Izzy Cardenas. Jennifer Gomez. C.C. Sanchez. Kayla Ellis. And Finny. But her name is?
Myu Wallace.
She's our fourth exchange student, so her name's a little difficult. But again, thank you for recognizing us tonight, and I'm super proud of this girl for overcoming all the adversity this year and being successful on the field and in the classroom.
and I think that always shows up when we're here. Kind of developed a mantra, if you will, when I was coaching, and that was that if you genuinely want the And that was that if you genuinely want the person next to you to have success, and you really, really want it, not because it benefits you, but because it benefits them, then you've got a chance to be great. And I think we have a lot of that going on. We're fun to watch. All right, last and certainly not least, I want to introduce Coach Gerard Hunter and his sidekick, Kendra Sansit. Well, I couldn't be prouder of these two. I'll be honest with you. I'll tell you what. And I'll tell you something else, too, that's unique. Sorry I'm on a roll, but when you go to our events, you'll find and see these coaches, West and High, by the way, I'm not just talking about Magnolia High, supporting each other. I rarely go to an event. I was at the boys' baseball game Friday night in Bryan, at a stadium I'd never heard of, Nutribolt Stadium. And Coach Hunter was there. I mean, it's just, if you go to a basketball game, you're gonna see them. You're gonna see them around. You're gonna see them supporting each other. And that's the coaching family that we have and the family that we have. And you'll see these athletes supporting each other. That's how you win. That's how you have great programs. Coach Hunter came to us from a sci-school. I'm not sure which one. I just always get them confused, sci-rant, sci-fair, sci-something. But he was there. We brought him in to interview. We've been told by several people, man, this guy's awesome. Boy, were they right. Dr. Metz and I had an opportunity to sit down along with Coach Doty and interview Coach Hunter. And I mean, I'm telling you, when he walked out of the room, it was like, we gotta go grab that guy before he gets out of the building and get him hired. He's been fantastic. Coach Sansit's been with us now for a while. Well, I share and proud of her. She's done a great job working with our girls and working with our kids, bought into Coach Hunter's philosophy of what we're doing. So Gerard Hunter, Coach Hunter, I'm gonna let you come up and introduce your team.
We had a really awesome season this year. At the beginning of the year, when we first met, we talked about the tradition of Magnolia softball. And we basically challenged them to let's bring back that tradition and let's put ourselves back where people think of Magnolia softball as one of the best teams in the state. And I think we did an awesome job this year. We finished the year 18-8. We got up to rank number two at one time in the state. I think we were ranked number two in the state for about two weeks. We spent the whole season ranked in the top 25 in the state. So it was an awesome season. They did great in the classroom, did great on the field. Same things. They supported other sports. They got kids to come support our sport. So I couldn't be more happier for these young ladies. So I'm taking my time and introducing them. So Maddie Bill. Bailey Lemmons. Senior Peyton Brokhart. Lindsay Gleason. Madison Nguyen. Reagan Creed. Alice Dubose. Michaela Janeski. Skylar Shanahan. Another one of my seniors, Megan Lightcap. Sawyer Jordan. And my last senior, Grayson King and Alyssa Miller.
Thank you, Coach, for the opportunity to recognize those guys tonight. That's awesome, guys and gals. A lot of talent. Thank you very much. Mr. Daniel, I think you're next.
Yes, sir. Pleasure tonight to recognize some of our career and technical education students. And if they'll make their way up with their teachers, Ms. Doty, Ms. Vaughn, y'all come on up. We'll kind of form a little line here so we can recognize you. All come on up. Had a great year in the CTE program. And tonight, we want to honor some of our cosmetology students in our Skills USA. We have Jessica Vaughn. And Jessica, she has Gloria McConnell. And Gloria is a senior this year, and she won third place in the state for job interviewing. And Gloria plans to use her cosmetology license to work her way through college. And throughout her high school, Gloria accumulated a total of 28 college credit hours. And Gloria plans on finishing up her associate's at Lone Star College. And obtaining her associate's degree, she plans to transfer to Sam Houston to pursue a medical degree. We have Demi Prejean. And Demi is a senior, and she got third place in state with nail care. And Demi plans to use her license, cosmetology license, to work in a nail salon to pay for her college. And she plans to attend Lone Star College in business and finance. And Demi plans to use her business and financial education to later open up her own salon. And then Diane Fernandez, she also got third place in state for nail art. And after completing her cosmetology license, she plans to go in the nail industry and specialize in nail arts to pay her way through college. And she also plans to earn a degree in graphic design. And she would like to create layouts and designs for magazines and websites. Now, how many of you get your hair cut? Raise your hand. See? See? These kids someday will be cutting your hair, perhaps, maybe. All right. Now, next, Millie Doty is our health science technology teacher. And we have Alandro Castro. And she got basic healthcare skills. She got third place in the state. And she is going to continue at Skills USA next year as a senior and plan to take the EMT class at Magnolia High School next year. And tonight, Brian Buchanan, our auto technology teacher, he couldn't be here. Rodolfo Attencio, he is a senior, and he got third place in the state for mobile electronics. Then we have Christine Morley. And she is our health science technology teacher at Magnolia West. And we have Catherine Hinchley, who's a junior. And she received second place in the state for nurse assistant. And she plans to be in Skills USA next year as a senior. And she wants to become a nurse practitioner to work with infants and children. And she hopes to publish her first book soon. That's pretty neat. And tonight, we're going to hold on recognizing our UIL students. We're gonna do that in June at the June Board meeting. A lot of them couldn't make it tonight. And also, we have some students from our FFA that couldn't make it tonight. But Morgan Hutcherson and Bailey Johnson, they both placed first place and finalist in the state in their FFA competition there. And then last but not least, we have Lisa Coons at Magnolia High. And we have Logan Bray. And Logan is a junior. And he won third place in the state for computer network technology. And also, Logan competed May 10th and 11th at Nationals. And he placed 17th out of 64 students at Nationals. He plans to attend University of Texas and major in network engineering. And he hopes to work in information technology or network engineering in his career. So let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you all. Great job. Our favorite part of the evening, even though the crowds thinned and we'll take a break in just a couple of minutes. All right. You know, as you guys know, each year, the citizens have an opportunity, citizens of the community have an opportunity to elect new school board members. And I'm happy to report that this year, nobody signed up to run against the two that were coming up for their election, Mr. Adcox and Dr. Moffett. So we're able to cancel the election on May the 5th just now. And that saves the district a lot of money when that happens. So that's a great thing. Plus, it's always great to keep these guys up here with us. That's awesome. And along with that, we always have an opportunity to reorganize our board each year. That's something we can do at any time. Well, not at any time, but at this time each year, each time there's an election. And so we need to have that discussion.
I would move that we keep the positions that we have unless somebody else feels different.
Okay. I guess then, what we need is a motion that we not only certify the candidates for the school board trustee election and declare the election official. And the position number six is Dr. Moffett, elected for a three-year term to expire in 2021. And position seven, Chuck Adcox, elected for a three-year term to expire in 2021. We need a motion for that first. Kristi motions. Who seconds? Kelly seconds. Okay, all in favor? Now then, Ms. Hinkleman, if you will come forward and do the honors of swearing in the oath of office for these two.
Yes, my pleasure. Come right up here, gentlemen.
I get where you're going. I almost brought a stool. Is it okay?
If y'all would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Trustee of the Magnolia Independent School District and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and law of the United States and of this state? So help you God. Congratulations. Congratulations.
It's a pleasure to keep serving you guys. Okay, so now for the next motion. We need a motion that the Magnolia ISD Board of Trustees to recognize the following officer positions. President, myself, Gary Blizzard. Vice President, Kristi Baker. Sorry, Chuck Adcox is vice president. I'm getting ahead of myself. Vice President Chuck Adcox. Secretary is Kristi Baker. And Assistant Secretary is Joe Duncan. I'll quit getting ahead of myself. We can do another motion. Sonia motions, seconded by Travis. All in favor? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. So, without breaking, without messing up too further, too much further, we're gonna take a short break here for those of you who want to scoot out. But certainly, all of you are invited to stick around for the latter part of the meeting, but we'll take a five-minute break. I was accused of getting ahead of myself because there's a game tonight, so that's my excuse. Okay, Ms. Hinkleman, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Mr. Brunner, I believe you're next.
All right, good evening. Just wanted to bring you up today real quick on where we're at on construction. I was out last month, so just to kind of get you caught up on what we've been doing. At Bear Ranch Intermediate, when I last addressed you folks in a board meeting, we were getting ready for spring break, and we were gonna move some of the areas of Bear Ranch Intermediate into the new wing. And we accomplished that. So the new wing is complete. We're now working in the existing building. I have these in areas, Area A and Area F. That doesn't mean much to you guys, but basically, it's the, there's an old standalone classroom wing that we've sort of attached to the new building. And it's gonna serve as a locker room for the new gymnasium. So we're working in that area and also the old administration cafeteria, kitchen, and library. And we're in the process of doing demolition and build-back in those areas. They'll be housing the special ed area, band hall, and art. So that works ongoing. And then, once it cools out, we'll move into the classroom wing and complete the renovations in the classrooms over the summer. This picture was taken about a month ago. And just to give you an idea of how much subsurface, subslab work had to be done in those areas for plumbing. And then, this picture was taken today, so we basically finished that. We're into the MEP rough end, as well as obviously putting up stub walls in that area. It's a great benefit to get a jump start. If we hadn't, it was really gonna be tough.
Did we save any of that old paneling that was in there?
Yeah. We're gonna put that in Mr. Byrne's office.
It makes me feel good.
So this is the old cafeteria that will become the band hall and flex spaces. Obviously, we'll have all the bells and whistles acoustically treated, the new cabinets, things of that nature. But so it's gonna be a great space, a great repurposing of this space. This is the old kitchen area that will become the choir room. And this is that sort of standalone classroom wing I was telling you about that we're turning into a locker room. And you can see, we've completed all the underslab work. We've got our plumbing stacks in. We're working on the MVP rough end in that area. So we've got a great head start and should have no problem finishing this up this summer. Onto the district conference center. We're making progress, kind of slowly. We're not, you know, we're kind of looking at a late-June schedule for completion on this. But we are kind of wrapping up the exterior. They've started working on the landscaping, irrigation. All the interior sheet rock's complete. We're working on interior finishes. A lot of the tile work, well, actually, all of the hard tile work has been complete. Get a little bit closer to completion before we put in like carpet goods and things of that nature. Mechanical systems are complete. Our electricians are in really good shape, and all of our plumbing fixtures are set. And we're working on sort of the finishing up in the restrooms with things like restroom partitions and accessories. And also in the kitchen, doing the final tie-in, all your gas and electrical to our kitchen equipment. Again, this is a shot of the port de chaire, the main entrance. This is sort of getting into the back of the house. This is the south wall. Took this to show you how we're making some progress with the metal trim and gutters and downspouts. Also, the landscaping and irrigation that's going in. This is in the more of the back of the house area. Took this shot just to show you the generator. We're working on the final tie-in of that. It's a shot of the lobby. I was looking at the pictures from a couple of months ago. Obviously, we made a lot of progress. You can see all the tile and stonework that I was talking about. Ceilings are in. Most of your electrical's completed. We're getting very close. Shot of the main banquet halls. And keep in mind, with the contrast of these stone surfaces, all of the drywall surfaces will be vinyl covered, a really rich vinyl cover. So it's really gonna make those accents stand out. Restrooms, as you can see, we're making some progress, getting those finished up. And the kitchen area, all the equipment's in. We're just finalizing all the tie-ins. Any questions with those jobs? All right, thank you.
You know, we got to go take our tour the other day. A few of us did. Man, I think Mr. Brunner and I, guys have done fantastic. So thank you. It's amazing. It's amazing. It really is. So thanks for all the hard work. I guess you're next.
I think I am. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good, thanks. We have an update for you on security and safety on the campuses. Mr. Stewart and I are gonna go over a few things, and then he's gonna bring up some of the members of our constables department from Montgomery County Precinct 5, who help us and keep our kids safe every day. So a few things I just wanted to go over with you. Some of this was in place for us, and security's something that is a priority for us every day for our kids. You know, we received something from the commissioner just recently, and I'm gonna read you a quote to a le, out of a letter he sent to all administrators in the state of Texas. And, uh, the commissioner says that schools must take preventative measures, uh, preventative safety actions to successfully fulfill their primary mission, which is as educating students. So, what we know is if we don't provide a safe environment, all the other things can't happen and don't happen. So, for us, safety is a priority every day. Going over the last couple of years, we've had some initiatives here in the district. Uh, starting last school year, we instituted an anonymous alerts, uh, system where, uh, people can report things that, uh, that make them nervous. They can, uh, report bullying situations or, or even potential safety hazards in a campus i- in a way that maybe they might not if they had to put their name on it and, and do that face-to-face. Those alerts, uh, go directly to administrators at our secondary level and then also come up here, uh, to personnel in our building so that we can follow up on each one of those things and, and make sure that we're using that as an avenue to keep our kids safe. Uh, and that started, um, I guess last school year, and it's been something we've been publicizing into this year. We have also spent, uh, money out of, uh, our, our last school bond that passed and made a concerted effort to improve and update, uh, security cameras a- at our campuses. Uh, we've, uh, updated fiber, Rottler, and his folks, along with Mr. Brunner, uh, have, have done a lot of planning and, and put a lot of thought into this. We've increased the coverage with our cameras, uh, we've upgraded their ability, uh, the amount of time that we can store, uh, and hang on to, uh, to footage. And we feel like at this point, uh, you know, from our elementaries on up, now we're covering access points and able to see things in a way that, uh, helps us stay in front of some things, but also helps us follow up on, on situations of concern. So, uh, the security cameras have been a big part of what we've, uh, what we've done to keep our camp, our campuses safe. After the, the, uh, school shooting incident in Florida earlier this year, uh, like, school personnel everywhere, um, it'll shake you up a little bit. And, and you know, you, you, you stop and think, are we doing everything we can do to make sure that this won't happen here in our schools? And, um, something you guys may not be aware of, but as each one of these, um, school shooting events or a school safety incident happens around the country, uh, Mr. Stewart and I sit down with the constable's office and we go over each one of those incidents and say, what did we learn? What, what, uh, what happened in this event? What do we need to change and adjust about our security planning, what we do with our buildings based off of the latest event that just happened? And so, after the events in Florida, it was no different. We, um, we met with our security, um, with the people that we trust with security of our campuses, our constables, and we talked about, uh, some of the, the points of concern. We talked about access points in our buildings and, um, spent some time planning to have personnel cover those better. And then, uh, with Mr. Brunner, uh, we've made plans, especially at our high schools, as, as kids move back and forth between, um, you know, the fieldhouses and the buildings and the career center in the building, uh, to institute some, uh, electronic pass points for, uh, key fobs where we can open doors and we can keep doors locked and secured more, uh, during the day. So, um, you know, those are some things that we're doing to try to stay in front of, uh, security issues, but really the biggest thing that we believe in is we know that the thing that we do that keeps our kids the safest is we put people who are professionals at keeping our kids safe in their midst. And, um, I'm gonna let Mr. Stewart come up and talk to you some about our relationship with our constable's office and some of the things we've done to put professional personnel in place, uh, to help our kids stay safe. So, Mr. Stewart?
As Dr. Bullock said, we review all the security plans and, and a couple times, and Lori Bagwell is our sergeant, and I wish she were here with us tonight, but she's doing what a lot of our security folks do, uh, she's working tonight. So, we, uh, we get them during the day and then we put them to work at night as well. Fortunately, they're very, very good about that. And we don't, rarely have events where they're not there. So, we constantly sit down and we review through these things, just as Dr. Bullock said. One of the other measures that we've put in place is, after the Florida shooting, we started going back through and really walking through how our buildings are audited. And once a week, every one of our buildings is audited by one of our, uh, school deputies. And they go through it, and a lot of times it's something very simple, you know, there's an all-clear, or, well, they left the door open by the gym again, they left the door open at the end of the hall by the, you know, and we've, we're working through a lot of those things and we're just getting better. Security's one of those deals that it, it just has to stay in front of you all the time. And, and it's really easy when nothing goes on to get used to it and, and complacent and, and you have to just remind our folks, but we constantly have a, uh, in the background running a, a constant vigilance every week, checking those things out. So, we're very blessed with that. We've also, uh, increased some security staffing, as, as we, Dr. Bullock pointed out. With the access points, architecturally, our two high schools are very difficult. And so is Magnolia Junior High. So, we have live-body security guys there now, and, uh, we'll be putting them in some uniforms, uh, this summer to try to get them to look a little more official. They won't look like our law enforcement, but they will be recognized as a uniformed person then. And, uh, we've done a, a good job. Both high school principals have helped us a great deal, getting better on our guard shacks. So, I appreciate both Dr. Garz and Dr. Metz on that. Looking at a greater presence, I happened to be at Magnolia High School this morning and one of the officers was out there and I asked her, hey, what's going on? She goes, oh, the guard shack guy had to go run over to the student parking lot, so I told him I could come up and cover it while he's gone. They were just checking, we appreciate that. It just makes sure there's a presence there that, that helps give, uh, just shuts off the idea that something silly doesn't need to go on. So, we've increased three security staffing. We have at both our high schools, three people apiece, and then we have the one at Magnolia Junior High. But when it comes to putting people in around our kids and what we want to surround our kids, we really enjoy the professional law enforcement folks. So, after the Florida shooting, shooting, we've added two positions that go through our elementaries. I've had a lot of elementary parents call and just kind of de-escalate. They were very worried, very concerned in the first week or two. One of them called me back and said, hey, I just saw an officer at one of our schools. Everything okay? I said, yeah, we're just making sure everything. She goes, I appreciate that. I got about seven, eight, nine phone calls in the week after those officers started walking through campuses, just going, hey, thank you guys for keeping our kids safe. And so, as a tribute to you guys, I just wanna, you know, you don't always get those calls from parents, you get some of the other calls we get, but I just wanna say, hey, they, they thank you guys for, for helping us do that, for putting those folks in place. I wanna, this time, I wanna introduce, uh, two guys that are gonna interact with some. Billy Madsen and Chris Jones, and want them to come up and talk a little bit. We've been very blessed. I, I, we've had a great relationship with the constable's office. We've learned a lot about, you know, transitioning back and forth depending on the issues at hand and, and it's been a, a pleasure to work with, uh, their office and, and their deputies. They do a great job, and, uh, they've helped us get, uh, fantastic deputies at the campus level, so.
Thank you.
Billy?
Thanks, Mr. Stewart. First of all, I wanna thank each and every one of you for have, for having us here. You know, it means a lot. You know, a lot, a lot, a lot of times, things just go unsaid and we just presume, we assume everything is taken care of. So, uh, you know, uh, first of all, thank you. Magnolia ISD very first hired one of our deputies back in 1996, and he was assigned at Bear Ranch. Since then, we've grown to seven deputies and one sergeant that patrol and take care of the whole district. The whole district includes seventeen schools, the, the new conference center, transportation, uh, the support center, maintenance, anything to do with this, uh, district. Along with that, we're approaching almost fourteen thousand students plus faculty. That's a big responsibility for, for, for law enforcement. And, uh, we're up to that task, we're up to that challenge. And there's nothing more important, I know to me, than my child, even though he's twenty-three years old, there's, he's the most special person at the University of Texas. And I'm sure all the other parents think the same thing about their child, same, same thing at this district. Every child is more special than the next, you know? So, that's, that's the most important, um, responsibility that we have. And that, with that, we take it very seriously because I look at each student and faculty as a part of our family as well. You're our responsibility. Anything happens to y'all, we're gonna be there. God forbid anything happens. You know, we live in a day, in today's society where we think, you know, it's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen. Well, I'm sure it's, I'm sure everybody has thought that, and it's happened. And I wanna applaud the school board and everything. After the Florida shooting, y'all immediately approved two more deputies for the remainder of the year. The, the first day, the first day, we had a additional deputy on campus at Magnolia Elementary. He was out there greeting the children and the parents. We got phone calls about that, saying that's so, that, that meant so much to them, that a deputy in uniform is out there greeting the parents and the students. It made them feel so much better knowing that that presence was there. We also care, we, uh, along with those two extra deputies, we have, we have four elementaries on the east side, four elementaries on the west side. Along with the, uh, seven deputies that we hired, plus the sergeant, we take care of four on that side, four on this side. Once we have a deputy, like Mr. Stewart said, once a week, every, every other day, however it may be, they're gonna do a check on those schools. And when they do, and when they do those checks, they're gonna fill, they fill out a form and they send that form back to Mr. Stewart stating what they have found, you know, unlocked door, open door, something of that nature, so we can, we can curb that problem, we can fix that problem, because we don't want anybody like gaining access where they shouldn't be, you know? We're all human, we're all gonna make mistakes, we're all gonna leave doors unlocked here and there. It happens, but we just need to make sure we become more conscious, more aware of, you know, keeping things locked, keeping doors locked, and doing things where we're supposed to do to keep, you know, to keep our children safe in, in the district. We also, I contacted the transportation department today, and I had no doubt, there's a hundred and ten buses. Wow, I mean, that was a shocking number to me. I had no idea there was a hundred and ten buses, with a hundred and twenty-five, approximately a hundred and twenty-five bus routes. That's, that's an enormous amount of mileage. That is a lot of ground to cover, you know? Anytime there's a disturbance on a bus, anytime so, there's an accident, we're gonna be there for y'all, you know? We want you to know that anytime, anytime you need us, we're gonna be there for you. And we're gonna do everything we can, everything within our power, to make sure this district is gonna be safe, and we won't, we won't have any kind of tragedies. Alright? I wanna, it, I'm gonna keep it short. I think there's a playoff game, I'm not sure. But I wanna keep it short. I wanna thank y'all very much. Uh, I love the working relationship we have with you. I cannot, I cannot express enough gratitude toward these two guys right here. Every time I have a question or anything, I can count on them to answer a phone. And if not, they call me right back. So, I can tell you, the, the, the communication and the reputation and the working relationship that we have with this district, I will, I will, I will put it up against anybody else in this state. So, thank y'all very much. Chip Jones, do you have anything?
The only thing I, I wanted to add to that is, is I do have, uh, I have five kids in the school district. Uh, our lieutenant has two, two kids in the school district. Our families, most of the people that work for us live right here in, in the community. And so, it might be eight to ten deputies that y'all are hiring, but we have our whole force of twenty-seven out there on a daily basis that watch buses, that do that stuff. It, it might not be a school deputy that shows up, uh, at, at the scene the first time, it might be one of our other deputies, but they have kids here too. So, that's the only thing I wanted to add to that. So, uh, thank y'all very much for everything. It's been a great relationship to work.
Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate y'all certainly from the constable's office and just on behalf of the school administration. I can't tell you how many times, uh, I've gotten a phone call from the constable's office over the weekend, or I've talked to Sergeant Bagwell, and, and it's either been, they're sharing information with us or we're sharing information with them so that we can be ready to take care of kids on a Monday morning. And, and, um, uh, the amount of trust we have and how well we work with those guys, uh, it goes a long way toward helping us feel confident and keeping our kids safe. So, Mr. Duncan?
You know, I, I'd like to say something to you gentlemen, just real quick, that there was a parent that called me that said her daughter was out in one of the parking lots and someone just kinda, just worried him a little bit. And, and one of you gentlemen came and just kind of de-escalated the situation and were so polite and so professional and so kind and so caring that, you know, it, it, that is, we do get some phone calls you really don't want. Phone calls like that are wonderful. So, just thank you for all you do. We, we truly appreciate you, and I know our kids appreciate you, and, and, and it's just a, that's a wonderful interaction between our kids and y'all.
And you know what? And to, to add on that, that's the way we should be. That's the way we should treat everybody. That's the way we ought to be towards every student in that school. And I, I appreciate the compliment. Thank you.
I also think it helps that when we start off in the junior high, like we have those kids there, a lot of people that are at our junior highs, they gotta interact with those kids on a daily basis, and it's more of a positive influence. You're always gonna have some kids that we're gonna have to deal with on a legal issue. But most of them, we're just dealing with, uh, day-to-day, we can be a mentor. They might not wanna go talk to a principal, but they'll come up and talk to an officer. They'll come up and talk to a female deputy that's over there talking, and they might have problems with it. So, we have a lot of things that they talk about that are happening outside of schools. And if we can be that positive role model that early, if we can get them early, we can get them all worked through.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you. Guys, thank y'all.
Thank you, guys, for all you do. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Okay, now moving on to our consent agenda. This portion of the agenda consists of items that are to be routine and act, enacted by one motion unless separate discussion is requested. So, items nine, A through E, has anybody got any questions or comments about any of those items? Alright, so we need a motion that we approve consent agenda items nine, A through E. Kelly, motion seconded by Kristi. All in favor? Motion passes. Okay. Scotty, I think you're up next.
Good evening. Let's see, I think I'm up here. Here I am. Getting the hang of this. Alright. I'm Leslie Scotty with Purdue Brandon. Thank you so much for having me this evening, this evening, and allowing me the opportunity to give you a delinquent tax report. Please note that as we go through the report, these are delinquent taxes only. So, the tax office collects about ninety-five percent of the district's base tax amount, and I get what's left. It's turned over to me in my office for collection. So, by law, taxing entities can contract with a delinquent firm, and, um, once they do so, uh, by statutory law, the taxing, um, there's a collection penalty of twenty percent that attaches to property and it becomes part of the delinquent tax penalty and interest. And that, from that collection, that is how we get paid, so we are of no cost to the school district. I know I go over that every time, but I, I really want everyone to, to know and understand how that all works. So, the, the taxpayer's not left in the dark as to this fact, so taxes typically go delinquent every year on February one. So, when they do go delinquent, the, the taxpayer gets a notice from the tax office that the attorney fee or collection penalty will attach to the tax if it remains unpaid on July one. So, come July one, uh, the twenty percent collection penalty attaches to the tax and it's turned over to us for collection. And by way of update, before I get started on the report, just because I kinda wanna, wanna mention this throughout and mention how it's gonna change the role, um, I had been kinda keeping y'all up to date on the Supreme Court, um, heavy equipment generator litigation, and, um, unfortunately, um, the Supreme Court made a decision early this spring, and they decided that the generators and heavy equipment are taxable at the location of the company, not out in the field, um, where they're doing the work. So, what, what does that mean for the school district? This school district in particular and districts statewide, it's, it's gonna affect, but this district in particular will lose about three hundred thousand dollars in base tax. And, um, just by way of update, the appraisal litigation is separate and distinct from the collection, which, which is what I'm doing, and, um, although my firm does participate and represents some appraisal districts statewide, we were not involved in this particular suit. So, there... So, there, there are many appraisal, um, valuation suits on similar, um, accounts, and to get similar companies statewide, and we were all waiting on this one decision that had gone, um, to the Supreme Court, which the Supreme Court's very selective on what they take up, so it's interesting that they took up this case and decided the way that they did, but in, in short, the accounts with the outstanding delinquency of about three hundred thousand dollars, it's an aggregate of many accounts, those will be deleted off the roll, so they probably by the fall, um, those will be off the tax roll, so those, those tax dollars that would have been collected, collectible, had there been a favorable decision for the appraisal districts, will, will no longer be on the tax roll.
They're delinquent, waiting for a decision.
They're waiting for a decision. So what happened was, the, um, the accounts were on the tax roll, they got tax bills, the generator company sued the county appraisal districts, respective county appraisal districts, wherever this property was located. Um, I, I can't remember in the one that went before the Supreme Court, who won at the, the district court level, but it went before a district court judge, someone didn't like the decision, they appealed, appealed it to the appellate court, someone didn't like that decision, so the Supreme, they appealed to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court actually selected it to give an opinion. So it's, it's, it's really a big deal, and it, it's gonna affect lots and lots of, of jurisdictions statewide, and there is kind of a silver lining here, um, they did, the companies with the delinquencies, um, in this particular district, they did not make what we call in the business a forty-two oh eight payment. So typically, to be able to sue the appraisal district over the valuation of your property, you have to make what's called a forty-two oh eight payment, or what you think the taxes should have been. It's, it's, um, a good faith payment, and usually if you don't make the payment, you're barred from getting to the judicial system over the valuation. Because the generator companies were arguing that the, that the valuation in this particular county was zero, they didn't pay anything, so that's a good thing, because then the school district won't have to refund a significant amount of money, which is going to happen to several districts statewide, but fortunately not this district, because the particular companies with the compressors in this county did not make forty-two oh eight payments. So, that is a, a bit of a silver lining, is it will trigger substantial refund amounts that the school district would have to come up with and potentially have to pay interest on as well. So, that is a, a bit of a silver lining, so it takes out a little bit of the sting of the decision. So, on this first chart, I, I, I played with the numbers a little bit, um, this is the delinquent roll as it actually is with the compressor accounts, but I, I actually, um, adjusted the figures a little bit to kinda give you an idea of what it would look like without them. So, so just know what you're looking at is with the compressor accounts that are, that are gonna disappear. So, this first chart is a, a snapshot of the delinquent roll, so it just tells us where we are in the collection process. So you'll notice the largest section is action pending, and it's representing, it's showing that it's forty-two percent of the delinquent tax base that's currently collectible, so when I subtract the amount for the compressors, that's actually gonna change to about thirty-one percent. So, so a more, a fair number would be thirty-one percent is actually in the action pending status. So, um, aside from the compressor accounts, um, these are accounts, typically, um, this section's gonna represent the, the current year that we're working on, twenty sixteen. So, we're, we're currently, um, phone banking, making phone calls, sending letters to lien holders on the particular properties that are delinquent, just trying to get in touch with the taxpayer, let them know about the delinquency, let them know that it, after this phase, it goes into the litigation phase, just try to let them know the severity of the issue, and that they could potentially lose their property for non-payment of the taxes. The next largest section is the deferral section, um, it's, it's showing twenty-nine percent on your chart. If I subtract the compressor litigation, um, delinquency, that a more true number would be about thirty-four percent of the delinquent tax roll is in deferral. So taxpayers that are sixty-five or older or disabled may opt to defer the payment of taxes on their residential homestead. So when they opt to defer, they, they file an affidavit with the appraisal district, and as long as that deferral is on their account, they do not have to pay the delinquent tax I cannot foreclose on their property by law. So, this, this just represents those taxpayers that have, have elected to defer the payment of their delinquent taxes. The next largest section is the litigation section, these are the accounts where we have delinquent tax foreclosure suits pending, and it's showing on your chart that it's about seventeen percent of the delinquent roll without the compressor, um, amount, so it's, a more true representation would be about twenty percent of the delinquent roll is actually in litigation. The next chart is the dollar range chart, so this really just gives us an idea of where the dollars are owed, um, the generator litigation would be in the ten percent and up, so, so that section will change drastically if you subtract about three hundred thousand out of that, that's gonna cut that in half, and, um, um, just to, to, to kinda let you know, while that appraisal district litigation was pending, I could not touch those accounts, so I've, I've never been able to actively try to collect those because that, that litigation was pending, so, um, it's not that we ignored them, it's that we, our hands were tied collection-wise. So, um, some of these are aggregate, um, groupings of accounts that are owned by the same taxpayer, so, um, just note that it may not be one, um, account, it may be, a taxpayer may own several delinquent accounts, and our system lumps them all together, so we can collect all of the particular person's accounts with one phone call or one letter, just to be efficient for our purposes, so that, that kind of sometimes gives people the wrong idea when they don't understand that, that my system lumps accounts together, so a taxpayer may own lots of money on several small accounts, or they may have one large account, so you can have to take that in consideration when looking at this, this account. So this one's just another collection tool that helps me direct my staff. The third pie chart is the taxes, year by year, you'll note, notice twenty sixteen is the, the largest chunk, um, that's the, the most recent accounts that have been turned over to us, we're steadily working on those. We had a bit of a, a setback, um, after the hurricane, the tax office, uh, county tax office had asked us to refrain from filing lawsuits for a little while, so we, we picked up steam and, and we're kinda back on track with collections on the twenty-sixteens. Twenty seventeen will be turned over to us in July of this year, so, um, next time we reconvene in the fall, I'll have those receivables to talk about as well. And you'll notice after twenty sixteen, the, um, percentages get, get smaller and smaller of what's actually still on the roll. And the next six are the historical collection data from two thousand and eleven, you'll see we're at ninety-two percent to, all the way to, to twenty sixteen. I'll concentrate on the last two, keep it brief. So for twenty fifteen collections, we're at eighty-four point thirteen percent collected. On the bottom left, you'll see the original amount that was turned over to us for collection, and in the, the bar graph, you'll see what is remaining due versus what we've collected, so eighty-four percent collected for the twenty fifteen tax year, and for the twenty sixteen tax year, we're at sixty-six point ninety-three percent collected. So moving right along on that. Does anyone have any issues about the report? I spend a lot of time talking about the, the compressor stuff, but it's, it's kind of a big deal for the, for the.
I was gonna ask you about the compression, so is it fair to say that the value of the property and the infrastructure is taxed appropriately, it's just not including the equipment that sits there?
It's being taxed in a different place. So the, the Supreme Court decided for taxable purposes that it's taxable at the headquarters location of the company that owns the generators, say if, if the company is located in Harris County, but they have generators in all these counties and oil fields, that the, all the property that's here, here, and here are actually taxable in Harris County.
That includes the property and the infrastructure that sits there, as well as the equipment?
This is just the, for the equipment, um, just for the, the equipment, the heavy equipment itself.
Okay, so the taxes for the property and the infrastructure still come to us, right?
Right, for the actual dirt, the land where the.
Right, and any infrastructure around.
Minerals under the ground, yes, they stay in Montgomery County, but it's actually for the, the heavy duty equipment that's doing whatever it's doing to get the oil out of the ground.
That can move.
Yes, it's movable.
Right.
But that, that's, that's really contrary to, to some of the, the, the more basic rationales behind how and where things are taxable with the tax code, so it's, it's really an out-there decision that they made in a tax-collecting attorney's opinions, because everything else, like, for example, a mobile home, if it's sitting out in Montgomery County, it's taxable in Montgomery County, you know, and whatever school district it's located in, no matter if it's owned by Green Tree Lending, which is located in Dallas, it's not taxable in Dallas, it's taxable where it's located, and similarly, you know, it's a, it's a piece of personal property like that compressor, so it's, it's an interesting decision that they made.
Did it distinguish between in-state and out-of-state owners?
It, it did not, and, and there, there are separate laws that kinda govern, um, you get more into federal law when you're talking about property that moves from state to state, and they, um, we do an allocation for that, it's allocated per its use in the state when it's, it's property that crosses state lines, so then, then you start dealing with federal law and, and property moving from state to state.
Okay.
That's a, deals with the commerce clause.
Sure.
But there's an allocation that's done on that, and I'm, I think there's a, a formula that's used by the appraisal district to determine how much is taxable in the state.
Okay.
Any other questions? So hopefully by the fall, so what, what this is gonna trigger now is, it's gonna trigger, um, summary judgment motions in each of the pending cases, um, wherever they're located throughout the state, and, um, the, the district judges are gonna take the Supreme Court decision, and that's, that's gonna be considered gold, and, because it's the Supreme Court, and so the, slowly but surely, the, the cases pending statewide will be decided in favor of the companies in almost all certainty, so hopefully by the fall, they'll be deleted, and you'll get a truer representation of what is actually collectible on the tax roll.
Well, like you said, the silver lining is, they, we didn't collect anything.
You don't have to give anything back.
Right.
Yes, that is the silver lining, because that, that could, that could really hurt a school district that's been paid thousands and thousands of dollars, and there's also provision in the tax code where they have to pay that back with interest, so, certainly a silver lining. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One last question, Leslie, and I just, I just find this fascinating, and, and I know, I, I gotta ask a question about something with, uh, delinquent taxes, and I didn't know the answer to it, but, but if we have a piece of property that's delinquent in Montgomery County for the school district, and you go into litigation on that piece of property, is it normal that, that it's also delinquent to other taxing entities, so hospital district?
Correct, correct.
So when y'all, when you go into litigation, is that a combined effort of the?
Absolutely, yes, so what, what happens is, um, the, um, us, us taxing jurisdictions, we all play nice with one another, even though we may be represented by different law firms, um, so what happens is that one taxing jurisdiction may file the tax suit, we give notice to the other taxing jurisdictions that said the lawsuit was filed, and they're given an opportunity to file what's called a plea and intervention, and the, the pending tax case, so once they intervene in the tax case, they become a plaintiff in the tax case as well, um, they're included in trial notices, um, so that they can appear and present their evidence to the court whenever it comes time for a trial in front of the judge, and so their, their evidence is, is, is put before the judge, and their numbers are included in the judgment, and ultimately the foreclosure sale.
So I guess at, at any sale?
Because if they're not, if they're not included, then their tax amounts could be wiped out, so.
Oh.
Yes.
So y'all stay in pretty close contact?
We all play nice, yes.
Answered my question completely?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
And, and here, al- almost all taxing jurisdictions with, um, with the exception of some, some municipal utility districts and, and water districts are, are collected by the county tax office, so, um, we all have access to the county tax office system, so we can tell when there are other taxing jurisdictions, and that's, we afford them notice and to keep everybody in the loop.
Good, good.
Well, thank you, I appreciate your time, please.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Please let me know if you ever need anything, and hopefully I'll see most of you Thursday night.
That's right.
Till then. Thank you, Leslie.
All right, Dr. Morris, you're next.
I'd like to say that Leslie's firm is the most expeditious delinquent firm I've ever worked with.
Thank you.
Um, so electricity RFP, excuse me, I've had some technical difficulties several times today, so, um, electricity RFP, the, the current RFP, um, or excuse me, our current electricity contract is not due for another two years, however, uh, the board may or may not be aware that, uh, since two thousand and seven, our electricity rates have, have cut more than fifty percent based primarily on market conditions. Um, of course, our electricity budget is the single largest line item in our budget other than, um, pa- pay and employee benefits, salary employee benefits, so, given that the current market conditions were as favorable as they are, we wanted to, to test the market, so to speak, and see if it might be advantageous for us to, uh, uh, have a futures contract in place. So we entered the market, uh, we received three bids, on this sheet right here, you'll notice that this is a history for the school district, uh, we've been with TXU for, I'm sorry, let me, uh, let me go down one more, I apologize, right here, excuse me. Um, so back in oh seven to oh nine, we were receiving a rate at eight point five kilowatts, uh, eight cents, eight and a half cents per kilowatt hour, um, and you can see the history, we've been with TXU since two thousand and nine, uh, they've done a fantastic job for us in terms of, um, the rebates they offer, and, and also working with the school district and keeping us abreast of market conditions and things of that nature. So, uh, we went out for an RFP, we received, and again, you will see, excuse me, our, our current rate is four point one, okay? Uh, we went out and performed a, a quick poll earlier today, talked to several other school districts, and of the school districts we talked to, uh, we could find only one, uh, that had a rate lower than what we currently have, so we're very pleased with that, and in case anyone was wondering, that's Cy Fair ISD, who recently, uh, secured a six-year contract with TXU, okay? So, uh, the submission from TXU was by far, uh, the most aggressive and, and the best submission, so we have basically eight years to, to compare, okay? There's, there's a, a one year to, all the way out to eight years, uh, that we could lock in, and you see there towards the bottom of the screen, the savings on a yearly basis, um, obviously this is something that made Mr. Brunner very happy, it's part of his function fifty-one budget, and so, um, and then you'll see the percentage savings in the second to last column on the right, okay? So ultimately, what we were able to lock in, and this has fluctuated a little bit since we struck on this, uh, or asked for the submissions about two weeks ago, in an unfavorable direction, however, it's still very close to this rate at this time, we would have the ability to lock in right at three point nine cents per kilowatt versus our current four point one cents, that's again, as low as it's ever been. So, um, our recommendation tonight, and again, you'll see the savings on a yearly basis of right at around fifty-seven thousand dollars for the six, seven, and eight year, uh, cumulative savings on the right, anywhere between three hundred thirty-eight thousand and four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, our recommendation, and of course, the fear of the unknown in any market is just that, but based on the submission, we are recommending a six-year, uh, agreement with TXU. Uh, so that would, it's fairly lengthy, since our current one still lasts another two years, but this would take us through two thousand, uh, twenty-six, and, um, the ability to lock in, like I said, uh, from a budget perspective, the, a, a known budget, except for new facilities and things of that nature, of course. So, it's a, it's a very large di- deal for the school district, particularly financially, so be glad to answer any questions if you have any. Again, here's a quick view of our historical cost.
Does the, when you compare, uh, does this contract include all of the infrastructure part of it too?
Yes.
Or just the buying of the, the energy molecule?
At, at this point, this is purely the fixed cost associated with a per-kilowatt basis, so we still have the distribution charges and things of that nature, but of course, that's highly driven by ERCOT and, uh, uh, the line folks, so.
So we pay four cents plus all that?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, excuse me, yes, sir, for, for, I apologize, for, for everything that's associated with the TXU as a provider, this locks us in as a, as a complete fixed rate. There's no negoti- no, uh, wiggle room at all, uh, for that purpose, so, and I know we're working on some other things to make sure that we, um, are as tight as we can be on the, on the distribution charge side of things as well, so. It's a wonderful thing for the district, quite honestly, to be able to lock this in for, for that many years, it's a good thing.
Any questions? I thought we needed to approve this. Just do it?
Yes, you need to approve the motion.
Yes, or it should be a motion to approve the, uh, RFP.
Okay, so we need, uh, yeah, we need a motion to approve the, uh, contract that Dr. Morris just discussed. Motion by Chuck, seconded by Sonia. All in favor? The motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Okay, Mr. Brunner, you're up again.
Um, to, we have one project, uh, we have several projects we're gonna be finishing up this summer, but this one went out, uh, for competitive seal proposal, that's the, it's basically phase three of Williams Elementary School. Uh, PBK prepared the documents, and we put them out. We took bids on April the twenty-sixth. This is to complete the library and classroom renovations at Louie Williams Elementary. Our winning bid, or what I, to, to me, the, the best bid, and it's also the low bid, is B and C Constructors, a company that's done a lot of work for us in the past, and they came in at nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, it's our recommendation that the district approve B and C Constructors to complete this, this, uh, final phase of We- of Williams Elementary for nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Brunner? All right, so we need a motion to approve the contract with B and C that Mr. Brunner just, uh, shared with us. Motion to approve it. Dr. Moffett first, seconded by Kelly. All in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Brunner.
Thank you.
Okay, you got anything else you want?
I would, I would.
That's right.
You could do some kinda pay raise for the principals that were here.
That's right, you got it. I think they would be, I think they're, they're motioning that they're in favor of it.
Yeah, they're, I think they're all in favor of it.
Wanna go to the secret room?
Yeah.
Something in crowd. All right, thank you, guys. Uh, we're gonna now, uh, recess into our executive session to, uh, discuss personnel discussion and recommendations pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, and discussions, discuss, discussion of purchase, sale, exchange, or value of real property pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two. Thank you. All right, we need a motion that we adjourn this meeting. Uh, Ms. Baker first, seconded by Joe. All in favor? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.